Yeah, and then it will turn, and now you can press screen and do the same thing, and I'll let go of it. And we should be good, I hope. Okay, thank you.
Brave New World. Okay. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Cheney?
Here.
Trustee Foster?
Here.
Mayor Newhart?
Here.
Trustee Bachman?
Here.
Trustee McManus, oh, I apologize. Trustee McKnight? Stephen Gaba?
Rest in.
And Mike Moser is absent.
Okay. Tonight, we have, we're starting with a public hearing. It's on the tentative budget for the Village of Warwick for fiscal year 2022, 2023. And Raina, if you would read the public notice or the legal notice.
Please take notice that the public hearing on the tentative budget of the Village of Warwick for the fiscal year beginning June 1st, 2022, will be held on Monday, April 18th, 2022, at 7:30 PM at Village Hall, 77 Main Street, Warwick, New York, at which time and place, all interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard. Copies of the tentative budget will be available for review on the village's website, www.villageofwarwick.org, beginning April 5th, 2022. Hard copies will be made available to the public by mail upon receipt of written request. The compensation proposed to be paid to each member of the village board is as follows: Mayor: $53,292.2 Deputy Mayor: $9,303.77 Trustees each: $8,152.8
So we'll open it up to the public if anybody would like to make any comments about the budget. There is a slight change that we will be making a determination once the public hearing is closed, and that is on the mayor's salary and the deputy mayor's salary.
I had a question.
Yes, go ahead.
So I could have missed it, but I was just curious, the bocce ball courts in Memorial Park?
Right, they are in, actually, this year's budget, we're building them now.
Now, okay.
So, and if, and most of the work is done in-house, so it's really with just materials.
What about the emergency exit near McFarland?
And that is?
Same thing.
Same thing, you know, it's not, we're doing all that work internally. It's not like we're hiring somebody, so it's very affordable, very inexpensive, we have the machinery, so.
Okay.
Yeah. I actually got a note from Don Humphrey. And I responded to that. Okay. Michael, do you want to say anything about the budget for this year?
Want to do it now?
Yeah, we can do it now, sure.
Good.
Basically, this time of the year, we constantly, after Michael goes through all the stuff in the budget, we talk about the land tax and the focus of it all, and where we are with all the funds that we have accumulated over the last few years. For the new board members, it might be interesting to go back in history a little bit. We decided to have a land tax a number of years back so that water and sewer equipment could be bought each and every year that we need it without having spikes in the budget or spikes in the water rates or sewer rates. And over the years, it has been very successful. We were able to build a water plant without any debt and because we were able to put money away each year for the water plant a number of years back. And we have decided, again, to do that with the wastewater facility. As you may or may not know, that's about a $12 million or $13 million, or I don't know what it's going to be by the time inflation hits. But we thought that we would extend the water land tax to an additional $400,000,000 a year in order to pay for the water, the waste facility. And we started putting money away a number of years back. And at the same time, because we had successfully used the land tax to buy our equipment we needed for water and sewer, we were able to use some of those funds as well to add to our bank account for the wastewater. And at the present time, with the $900,000 that's going to go into the new budget, we were going to have about $3.6 million towards the wastewater facility. So if it is $12 million and we get $3 million from the state, we're down to nine, and 3.6 would bring us down, obviously, to something that we can then afford over a short period of time instead of 20 or 25 years or 30 years. And the idea then is, we then have the ability with the other half of the land tax to continue to have expense, pay for the water and sewer equipment that we may need as those things break down quite often, or they get used up quite often. And at the same time, we will, we have been able, because of this land tax, we've paid off all our debt, we have no debt going forward, we don't anticipate any debt going forward until, obviously, we are indebted to this wastewater facility. So it's been a successful use of the money. It's allowed us not to have spikes in increases in water and sewer, and obviously, given us an ability to put money away for the wastewater facility so that we can hopefully be able to pay it in 10 years or less.
That's great.
And I know that you're going to be talking about some of that and stuff like that.
Yeah, I'm going to just talk about some of the highlights for this year's budget. So I'll go over that quickly. So in the general fund.
If you have any questions, you know, just give me a yell, I'll go over stuff with you. But basically, it's been actually a more successful program than I think anybody really thought. And the passports and the money there, and the president board members have been around for a while. You know, they've all for keeping the debt, unlike some other municipalities around that have huge amounts of debt. Basically, because of poor planning. Now, that doesn't mean you don't get an emergency here or there, when we had Hurricane Sandy. But we had the funds to take care of it, and when we got our reimbursements from the federal government state, we replenished. And again, our debt has been minuscule over the years, and right now, we have none.
Just for my benefit, when you say land tax, are you talking about benefit assessments? Or are you talking about real property taxes?
It's the tax only on the land value, not on the value of the house and the land.
So it's an half the land tax?
Yeah. And we've been doing that for, I would say, 15 years.
At least, yeah.
And so you were saying earlier that half is going in one direct, so moving forward after we have to get this loan, a portion of that money is going to be going toward the loan, but we'll still be able to put a portion away?
It's really broken down into two parts. Off the top of my head, I think it's about $490,000 that goes towards the water and sewer equipment, or whatever we need there that is like equipment. The remainder is put aside for the wastewater. Technically, when the wastewater facility is paid for, that will then cease unless there's another million-dollar project that we want to use that for. Because, I mean, the joke sometimes is then we need sooner or later to do something about our water tanks. And I remember the days it was only going to cost $20,000. People reminded me that was just to paint it. But now, it could be upwards of several hundred thousand, if not more. So some of these things are so expensive that to pay them over 20, 30 years, by the time you finish paying them, you need a new one.
Yeah.
Whereas if we're upfront, we're not in that situation, we have the ability to do more.
I was just checking in on sort of our ability to have reserves. Like, the way that it's set up is that a portion is going to go to, toward paying the loan, but we'll still have some reserves for equipment, you know, failures, et cetera.
We have an equipment reserve in the general fund, and that is for the DPW mostly, for trucks or other major equipment. I think we're using some of it this year for a, I forget the name of the vehicle that we're getting. And we're also putting money back in. We also have an infrastructure reserve, for what it says, infrastructure, which could mean almost anything that we need a lot of money for. And there is approximately $1,005,000 in there. And then, of course, we have the wastewater that I just talked about, which will have, which, on this budget test, is about 3.6. And then, we have a, the water reserve to fix the reservoir. We have money in that, we thought, years back, that we would have to do something, but it's been delayed. But there's money in there, so when that happens, again, we're not going to have the spikes
Yeah.
we'll be able to pay for.
And so I guess when we are done paying off the loan, in about 10 years, we'll continue to put that, the money that we will be gaining through the land tax, that will be going back into a reserve fund for future structural improvements?
That's the choice that you will make as a board. We have, obviously, three choices. One is to keep that same land tax and put it in a reserve for something, which you can decide what to do. We can eliminate it because it was originally designed only for the wastewater. Or we can reduce it and put it into some sort of reserve. Hopefully, that will be in 10 years or less, unless the state or federal government, under the new federal infrastructure, comes up with more money, which would then reduce the number of years, which I hope. Because that way, when that's paid off, we can start focusing on a couple of other major costs that the village will have to incur.
Thank you.
Good question.
Now, you're hitting me for the budget as well?
You can stick around for a minute, just in case. So I just wanted to go over some of the highlights that are in this year's budget, some of the things that we are anticipating. And this is the general fund. As far as our physical home, Village Hall, the first and second floor will be re-carpeted and painted. And then, there'll be a major repair of the front steps at Village Hall. It's been a long time coming, and it desperately needs it. In the central garage, bay doors, the bay doors will be repaired, and there will be a generator hooked up to our central garage, also in addition of washer and dryer. And that is because when our men are up to their elbows in mud, it's a great thing to have back at the garage. And under special items is the completion of the village's Warwick, Village of Warwick's comprehensive master plan. So that's something that we've been working on for the past two years, and it will finally come to completion during this year. Under streets and roads, there's repairs slated for South Street and Park Lane. South Street is a large project, which is a community development project, and it's between Second and Third Street. And then, there's repair and curb sidewalks at Country Lane, and also paving projects, which include Elm Street, Orchard Street, and Welling. We have actually more projects that we would like to do, but because of the spike in costs of Maccadom, we may be limited to fewer streets to be repaved. But those streets, those three streets specifically will be. Welling will include curb work as well. And under road improvements based on 2021, 2022 New York State DOT tips reimbursement, we have received $174,321 for that type, all those improvements. And in parks, the plan is for new replacement cameras at multiple locations in Stanley Demming Park, a new tool kit, tool cat attachments, backpack blowers, weed whackers, push mowers, et cetera. In Memorial Park, there's some buildings that are, will be repaired, and also slated are picnic tables and grills at Memorial Park, which is actually along McFarland Drive, McFarland picnic area. And also, the plan is to replace the bleachers at the girls' softball field. And under storm sewers, slated for this year, major repairs on Southern Lane and Country Lane. And this year's grant applications include the following: the 2022 CDBG, which is the South Street ADA sidewalk, which I mentioned before. The 2018 grant from the DEC for two charging stations, which will be completed this year. 2017 Hudson River Valley Greenway Comprehensive Master Plan for $10,000. And that has been on hold because they will not give us the funds until we finish our comprehensive master plan. So we've been extending it, and it's not a tremendous amount of money, but every penny helps. And then, also, there's a 2021 Justice Court Grant for courtroom improvements. And as well, and very recently, there's a 2022, 2023 community funding project from Sean Patrick Maloney's office to hopefully move the Maple Avenue Pump Station, which is in the budget, but if we can receive some funding to do that, that would be excellent. And underwater, in this year's budget, under purification, we have the construction of Well Number Three, which is a major infrastructure project. The relocation salvage and salvage genset from Orchard Street to the water treatment plant, raw water treatment plant, and a new standing seam roof at the microfiltration plant in Memorial Park. And under water pump stations, there'll be planned for a new genset at Hilltop Pump Station, a new genset, which are, gensets are generators, right, at the Galloway Pump Station. And again, what I mentioned before, the Maple Avenue Pump Station relocation. That plan is in tandem with the New York State DOT and the large paving, repaving project for Route 94. And finally, the SCADA system for Southern Lane, Ridgefield Pump Station, and Laura Lane Pump Station. And under transmission and distribution.
So, Mayor?
Yes.
So for the water pump stations, those, the gensets, right, the generators are because, in case there's a power outage?
That's correct.
The water would not be able to be pumped through the different zones?
That's right.
And these were the recommendations from the recent engineering report?
Um, I believe so, yes, yeah.
It's part of a long-term plan, we've been doing them, trying to do one a year.
How are those fit, natural gas?
I believe all of them are natural gas, yes.
So that includes the hookups as well, or just?
Yes.
Okay.
Includes the generator, the transfer switch, the connections. And the one at, let's see. The one at Galloway, the Galloway Pump Station, that's going to be hooked to the generator at the new firehouse. So we've worked out a, so that there doesn't have to be two generators, and there doesn't have to be a generator sitting on that corner because the pump station is underground on the corner of South Street Extension and Galloway. Not Galloway, but Galloway Heights.
And the SCADA system is for remotely monitoring these other pump stations, is that right?
That's correct.
Now, would that save on the human hours that go into physically going out there to each one and monitoring?
It's more an emergency situation, so if anything goes wrong, they have.
There's no operational.
I mean, yeah, they can tweak it operationally, but generally, the pump stations pretty much run independently. It's just a matter of if something were to, you know, there'd be a power blip or something that it would then allow them, or something, or it would also indicate if the pumps were working too long, which means that there's, we're losing water somewhere, probably. So it's a good opportunity to monitor.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? No, they're really good questions, and I think it's good for the public to hear. So also, under transmission, distribution, we are working on a program of reservoir land acquisition, and that's through a grant program. And then, the purchase of a correlator and the Galloway Heights pressure-reducing valve and the Robert Drive pressure-reducing valve vault replacement. So those are all projects and purchases under the water fund.
So, Mayor, the land acquisition, I mean, that's quite specific, 385?
Right.
Is that based on knowledge of the actual property?
That is based on.
The application that was made was based on an estimate of what the properties would sell for based on their true value at the time, which was probably three years ago.
Is that in the village or town?
It's in the town, it would be in the town in the watershed of the reservoirs.
Okay.
Which you'll be visiting soon.
Yes.
Bring your bathing suit. And then, under the sewer fund, equipment and projects, the sewer pump station, the SCADA system at Robin Bray and Warwick Grove, and also chemical handling equipment, electric motor replacement for the pump stations. And under sewer collection system, the purchase of a sewer jet truck, inflow and infiltration studies, and roof replacement of the storage barn at the wastewater treatment plant. And of course, the sewer plant itself, which is a $12 million upgrade, and that is continuing. To date, the work, it's still at the design phase, though it should be done relatively soon. And the UV system has been, has been, it's not complete, but it's.
Very close.
It's very close, so. Under water and sewage usage rates, there is no increase in water rates this year, but there is a 6% increase in sewer rates. And so, just a summary, the tax cap this year was at 2%. So it, the way it goes, it could be actually less than 2% based on the, what is it?
calculation of the Consumer Price Index and.
Right.
It hasn't been 2% for a number of years.
Lower.
1.7, 1.8. This is the first year it's been 2% for a while.
Right. So I'm very glad to say that we have, you know, achieved a budget that remains at 2%. So at the tax cap level. The sewer plant improvements, the sewer land tax continues to save the funds needed for the upcoming major sewer plant upgrades. The estimated cost, approximately $12 million, this is what Michael was speaking of earlier. The village received a $3 million grant from New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation. The sewer land tax collected over the years will be used to repay the anticipated 15-year-long, 15-year-long-term bond borrowed from the EFC.
Or less.
Or less, yes. And the water land tax, there will be no land taxes, taxes will be collected for the water fund for this year. All land taxes collected will go toward the sewer plant improvements. So that, I think, gives you the big picture of what we accomplished as a budget for this year. So are there any other questions that you guys have? Any, now that you've heard all of this, are there any questions that you may have?
Well, just the 6% increase in sewer rates?
Yes.
per household?
Yes, yes. But then, there's no increase in water rate, so that's, we try to balance it out. The reason for the increases are because of the debt that we are, that we have, you know, that we have to, you know.
We also have an increase in the cost of the chemicals and those kind of things, which.
Those are significant to.
Are going up some past that we can even budget for.
Right.
But we, we're okay so far with the water, but there is going to be a study for the water rates and sewer rates and the use of water and the use of sewer by the, the use of sewer by the water and the use of water by the sewer to make it more within a realistic idea of what it's costing, the water and the sewer. But right now, and always kind of being water and sewer kind of together, but we might get a little bit more specific with water being paid for itself and sewer paying for itself, even though we're using the sewer and the water between water and sewer.
Do you see any, is there any end in sight in terms of like the chemical cost increases? And what, what is, do we have any insight into like what's driving those cost increases?
Well, last year, anything that had to do with chlorine was, there was a problem because there was a fire at a plant in Louisiana. And when that plant went down, it had a significant impact on the production of sodium hypochlorite as well as chlorine. We pretty much use sodium hypochlorite exclusively, but we ended up having our provider of that material come to us and basically say, here's, here's the cost increase. And we said, well, we've got a contract, there's no provision for cost increase. Well, then I want to stop delivering. So we ended up having to accept that, and then we went out to bid again in December in order to get new prices. Those prices have held so far this year. But we got new prices that are going to become effective June 1st. My, you know, it's quite possible, you know, and things have been compounded. The lack of transportation and the additional cost of diesel fuel and gasoline to move the product to us. So, you know, there are a lot of factors that weigh in on this. Is there an end in sight, one would hope, but I don't know that it's going to be any time during this coming fiscal year.
Yeah, the shipping surcharges are extraordinary.
Yeah, we're starting to get hit with Jones.
Doesn't Jones Chemical produce these type of?
They do, and they were asked to bid, and.
Yeah, usually, they don't. Because of the size of, I think, our, you know, coming direct to us, they can't do it as inexpensively.
And they make it right there, though?
They don't make it, they repackage it right there. Okay. So if there's no more questions, could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Still moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And so, Carly, it's your shining moment.
The first of many tonight.
Number 20.
Oh, goodness, you even told me, I was all prepped on that. All right, so I'd like to make a motion to revise the tentative budget to increase the compensation proposed to be paid to the mayor from $53,292.2 to $53,797.55. And to increase the compensation proposed to be paid to the deputy mayor from $9,303.77 to $9,574.76.
Second, second, okay. I guess I will have to abstain from this one.
So will I?
Yes, so.
I don't know, I don't know that that's necessary.
I don't know that it's strictly necessary either. I mean, you have to vote on salaries for everybody. If you're more comfortable doing it, feel free, but you need all three votes.
Okay. Thanks, guys. Really. Okay, we have a second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. And then, the resolution.
Oh, so we start, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, I'm just putting them up front, just so that they're.
Okay, okay, I thought it was going to be a little bit later.
Yeah, sorry. It's number 13.
I'm learning, guys.
No, usually, we don't do it that way, but.
Usually, we stick to the script pretty well.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget modification request as per the village treasurer's memo.
No, no, no.
We already did that.
No, 13.
So I'm going to make a resolution adopting the 2022, 2023 village budget, whereas a tentative budget, the proposed village budget for the Village of Warwick, was prepared and introduced for the 2022, 2023. introduced for the 2022, 2023 fiscal year. And whereas a public hearing was held on April 18th, 2022, and all interested persons were afforded an opportunity to be heard with respect to the budget, the proposed village budget, after which such public hearing was closed, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the board of trustees of the village of Warwick hereby adopts the proposed village budget of the 2022, 2023 fiscal year, including any amendments to such budget as approved by the board of trustees, which shall upon adoption become the final village budget for the 2022, 2023 fiscal year. And be it for the resolve that the mayor, the village clerk, and any officer, employee, or consultant, as directed by the mayor, is authorized and directed to take any and all actions that are reasonably necessary, proper, or convenient to carry out the purposes of this resolution.
Okay, and.
Second.
Thank you, Barry. And so, roll call.
Trustee Cheney?
Yes.
Trustee Foster?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight?
Yes.
Trustee Bachmann?
Yes.
Mayor Newhart?
Yes, very good. Michael, thank you. Thank you for all the hard work. May I have a motion to accept the reports, March 2022, Clerk's Office, Justice Department, Planning and Zoning, Building and Planning Department, and TPW.
I'll motion.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And a motion for authorization to pay all approved and audited claims in the amount of $186,296.05.
I'll motion.
You should say so moved.
So moved, sorry.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And under correspondence, we do have a notification about the Arbor Day celebration for the village, which is Friday, April 29th, 2022, at 9:45 at the Roger Metzger Arboretum in Stanley Deming Park. We are planting two trees, one each in honor of a former trustee, George McManus, and Bill Lindberg. And it's a great celebration. It involves school kids from Park Avenue School, and it's truly a lot of fun, and we're partnering with the Warwick Valley Gardeners. So it's at 9:45, the public's invited, trustees are invited, and it's a, it's a good time to have by all. Privilege of the floor. This is a moment if you would like to speak to the board.
Well, I was just wondering, who's Michael?
Yes.
What's his title?
He is the village accountant.
Oh, he's the village accountant. Okay, and Barry Cheney?
Yes, I'm the deputy mayor and a trustee.
Okay, all right, and you are the attorney.
Okay, so we'll move on to motions then. So Barry, you have all the fun tonight. You've gotten all the.
Yep. Motion to accept the bid from Westler Pool and Supply Company for the delivery of sodium hypochloride liquid 12.5% per the recommendation of DPW Supervisor Mike Moser and JCO Regional Manager Keith Herbert. Contract period will be June 1st, 2022 to May 31st, 2023.
Okay. Do I have a second?
So moved, or do I have to say second?
Second, he made the motion.
Second.
Just, just for a point of information, last year when we started the year, we were $2.13, $2.139 per gallon, and this year it's come in at $2.19. So it's, it's stayed pretty, it's kind of gotten back to where it was.
That's good. So any other questions from the board?
The, so coin NB, is that no bid? Under the?
Right.
Okay.
Slack was the, well, no, that's the PACL. The, the second line.
We're not talking about sodium hypochlorite?
So sodium hypochlorite, we did get three bids.
Slack, Amrex, and Coin, not Westler.
No, Westler, Westler was the, was a successful bidder.
For the sodium hypochlorite?
Yes.
Right, we're, we're talking about the sodium right now.
Okay, okay.
So the procurement policy is three, three bids? Is that correct?
We, we, we try and get three. Sometimes if they decide not to bid, there's nothing we can really do about it.
With the procurement, it's also the, you know, that you make that attempt. If they, if they don't either respond, or if they're, for many reasons why they might not bid, you know, we put the bid out publicly, of course, it's advertised, so that's part of the process as well.
Some of them, I just, I see that there's, like the last one, the potassium, right, one is for 1.8, one's for 2.8. Quite a big swing on that one. When the difference in two bids is so great, does that suggest we need an additional bid? Even though I know this one is particularly for sodium hypochlorite, right, but just, right, that's, that's the most specifically for sodium hypochlorite?
Usually they're reliable, and, and these are people we've dealt with in the past.
Okay, so they're known entities.
So, so yeah, I, I wouldn't expect, while, while there seems to be a big difference there, I, I think you can just look and Coin submitted on a number of items, and they were.
Highest on every single one.
They weren't a low bid on any of them, and they were pretty, some of them were very high, similar to the, to the potassium permanganate.
Okay, so to me, looking at these, I mean, it would be nice to have, you know, three or four, but if, if one of the vendors is consistently the highest on every single item, sometimes by a lot, and several no bids, to me, that would suggest maybe in the future we look to slot in a different potential vendor.
Yeah, I think, I think we're, I think we pretty much have invited everybody that delivers in this area to do this. And JCO, who's our contract operator for water and for wastewater, they're contract operators for multiple municipalities throughout Orange County and, and surrounding counties, and so they've got their finger on the pulse of who's out there and who's, you know, able to, to bid and willing to bid because they deliver in the area.
Okay.
We also received a few notices of no bid from companies that Keith did reach out to that sent a letter saying they were not going to bidding.
Okay.
And it was, it was posted publicly?
Oh, yes.
Although we're finding that, you know, the normal means by which you post publicly, which is generally the newspapers, certainly aren't enough anymore. Most people don't use that as their source, and so we have lists of vendors that we use year after year, and we make sure they're notified when we have a procurement that we want them to bid on.
Okay.
Okay.
No other questions for me, thanks.
Okay, thank you. So we have a second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to accept the bid from Slack Chemical for the delivery of PACL, sodium hydroxide, caustic beads, sodium permanganate liquid 20%, citric acid liquid 50%, and blended ortho phosphate, per the recommendation of DPW Supervisor Mike Moser and JCO Regional Manager Keith Herbert. The contract period will be June 1st, 2022 to May 1st, May 31st, 2023.
Okay, second.
Just maybe a little bit explanation here in terms of like what we paid last year. The PACL, we were paying $3.41. And I forget what the units are for it, but last year, it's 508 this year. The sodium hydroxide, caustic beads were 60 cents a pound, they're almost a dollar 10 a pound. The sodium permanganate didn't go up very much, 10.15 to 11.15. The citric acid per gallon price went from 5.95 to 14.34. And then the blended ortho phosphate went from 8.89 to 14.39. So we've seen pretty significant price increases across the board.
So for me, what will be helpful in the future, these are all unit costs, to understand the number of units, right, so you get a sense of the true cost.
Right.
Because I have, I have no idea, you know, how many units we would need of the sodium hydroxide, right? I mean, are we talking, are we using a lot? Are we?
Well, the sodium hypochlorite, yeah, I'm, I'm probably not a lot on the, on the sodium hydroxide.
I guess in general.
I mean, Keith does that, that in developing his, his budget.
Yeah.
He projects, you know, what the costs are going to be and, and how much, what his usage is. So, I mean, he has those numbers, we could get them.
Okay.
Okay, good. So we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept the bid from Amrex Chemical Company, Inc., for the delivery of sodium
hydroxide liquid caustic 25%, sodium bisulfite 38%, and potassium permanganate, per the recommendation of DPW Supervisor Mike Moser and JCO Regional Manager Keith Herbert. The contract period will be June 1st, 2022 to May 31st, 2023.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
So, so it's not the, oh, sorry, that's Amrex, I was looking at the Slack column. So it is the lowest, we've paid the lowest price, unit price for each one.
The ones that are shaded are the lowest for each, and, and these are pretty similar to what we paid last year.
Got it.
The exception, though, is with the sodium hypochlorite, where we only had one, we only had one bidder out of everyone.
Right.
That's right.
No, Amrex bid.
On sodium?
Oh, Wexler, never mind, I'm sorry, Wexler only bid on the sodium hypochlorite.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, so all of them had multiple.
Oh, I was looking at hydroxide, sodium hypochlorite, yeah, yep.
It's not my night.
Yeah, well, it's a little involved, but.
I'm good, I'm good.
You're good, okay. Cory, any burning questions?
I just see this long list. Oh, my gosh, we're going to be here all night.
Okay, so we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number four, motion to accept the bid from Constellation New Energy, Inc., for the electrical power supply in the amount of .10565 per kilowatt hour, as per the recommendation of DPW Supervisor Mike Moser. The contract will be for the period June 1st, 2022 to May 31st, 2024.
Okay, do I have a second?
Sorry, I do have a question on this one.
Okay, did you, did somebody second it?
I'll second it, but I have a question.
Yeah.
May 31st, 2024.
Oh, yeah.
Not 2023.
It's a two-year contract.
Okay, great, thank you.
Saves us from having to do this every year, okay? And, and they're, if they're able to, you know, give us a solid number for two years, and.
We're like walking in.
Yeah. Okay, so we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept the bid from M&amp;R Energy Resources Corporation for the natural gas supply at the fixed price of .6799 dollars per cubic, what, cubic, something cubic feet, CCF, as per the recommendation of DPW Supervisor Mike Moser. The contract will be for the period June 1st, 2022 to May 31st, 2024.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to accept the refuse bid from County Waste in the amount of $200 per haul and $125 per ton per 30-yard roll-off box for refuse, and no charge, no rebate per 30-yard roll-off box for metal, and 25.23 per pickup per two cubic yard container, as per the recommendation of DPW Supervisor Mike Moser. The contract period will be June 1st, 2022 to May 31st, 2023.
Okay. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept the bid from Joseph Warren Electrical LLC for on-call electrical services for the period of June 1st, 2022 to May 31st, 2024, as per the DPW Supervisor's recommendation.
Okay, second. Okay, all in favor?
I have a question on this. So these are for the on-call electricians. What, what do they do for, for here, for?
Every, anywhere, parks, yeah.
Wastewater Treatment Plant, the parks, it's, it basically establishes a rate by which we're charged for the services they provide.
So we have two bids, right? Have we used both of these bidders in the past? Or this particular one?
The particular one is our current service provider.
Current.
The other bid came from a former service provider.
Got it, okay, thank you.
And one of the nuances to this is prevailing wage rates. If you're a company that employs people other than your relatives, close relatives, I guess it is, you have to pay prevailing wages, otherwise you're free from that because you're a family-owned business.
Okay. Okay, so we have a second, all in favor?
Aye. Motion to accept the bid from Westar Tech Service Corporation for on-call plumbing HVAC services for the period of June 1st, 2022 to May 31st, 2024, as per DPW Supervisor's recommendation.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions? All in favor?
Well, we do have just one, though, right? One, one bidder?
Yes. It was, it was sent out to, or more than one was notified, and we just didn't receive bids from others.
So only one cared to bid on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Part of the problem is actually prevailing wage. It does stop a lot of people from participating.
Is this our current on-call?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve payment number 11 in the amount of $35,957.50 to Tam Enterprises, Inc., for the vertical spiral screen at the Orchard Street Pump Station for work involved in the completion of the project, with the exception of the punch list items, per the recommendation of village engineer David Getz. Funds are appropriated in budget code G.8120.4950 in the 2021-22 budget.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve the, and authorize the mayor to sign change order number two for the vertical spiral screen Orchard Street Pump Station project with Tam Enterprises, Inc., for the deletion of item number four, new generator pad, $18,000. And deletion of item number 19, furnish and install chain link fence, $7,500, decreasing the contract price by $25,500 with a new contract price of $394,500, as per the recommendation of village engineer David Getz.
349,000?
I'm sorry, 349, yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Cory?
Make a motion to shred 41 boxes containing files from the clerk and treasurer's office, which have reached or are, or are beyond the retention date, according to the New York State Records Retention and Disposition Schedule, LGS-1, on Saturday, April 23rd, 2022, during the Warwick Lions Club Shred Fest event at a cost of $7 per box.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Is this an annual thing?
Ah, yes.
No.
No?
Well, more than annual, usually. We make these changes.
No, the shred event is.
Oh, shred, I'm sorry.
We didn't have it last year because.
I was ahead of myself.
So it's whenever the, the duration that we're required to keep records comes up, that's what drives shredding the old ones and?
Well, correct, and it's usually, we participate in this event because it's cost savings, tremendous cost savings.
How much would it usually cost?
We've only used this service since, since I've been clerk, and I've heard in the past that there was a shred truck that would come specifically for the village, and the village would close one day out of the year and hold a shred event. But this, this definitely works for our needs, and what we do is we have an off-site vault where we keep all of the, any boxes that leave the village, we record them as to their retention schedule. Many documents are just six years, some of them are just, if they're copies, they're just shredded immediately, that sort of thing. Many documents are just six years. Some of them are just, if they're copies, they're just shredded immediately, that sort of thing. So, once a year is.
I think the village usually shows up first to this event.
That's right.
Yeah.
Forty-one boxes.
With forty, well.
Two hundred eighty dollars.
Our DPW guys bring them. So it's a good thing. Okay. So we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And Carly?
I, uh, would like to make a motion to grant permission to Warwick Youth Football and Cheerleading to use Veterans Memorial Park football field and the area between the over thirty-five field and parking lot for practices and games from May fifteenth, twenty twenty-two to November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Request includes use of field lights for the season and in the event of rain, use of Veterans Memorial Park Pavilion for the cheer teams. It is the responsibility of Warwick Youth Football and Cheerleading to enforce that parking is in the designated parking lot, not in the grass on the entrance roads. Um, all events must be in coordination with the other activities taking place in the park such as Warwick Little League, Highlander Rugby, OC Bombers Softball, Warwick Adult Kickball, and the Warwick Lascals. All activities must be in accordance with directives of the Orange County and New York State Departments of Health. Completed facility use permit, proper proof of insurance, security deposit, and Memorial Park Football over, and over thirty-five field light fee have been received.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, uh, Carly, I'm going to direct you back to, um, number twelve. Just the one you tried to do before.
Um, so a motion to approve the budget modification request as per the Village Treasurers memo dated April eleventh, twenty twenty-two.
Okay. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And then number fifteen.
Motion to grant permission to the Union AME Church Missionary Society to use Railroad Green on Saturday, June eleventh, twenty twenty-two from eight AM to three PM with a rain date of Saturday, June eighteenth, twenty twenty-two for Community Health Fair. All activities must be in accordance with the Orange County and New York State Departments of Health. Completed park permit, application fee, security deposit, and proof of proper insurance have been received.
Great. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to close Railroad Avenue on Saturday, June eleventh, twenty twenty-two with a rain date of Saturday, June eighteenth, twenty twenty-two from six AM to three PM for the benefit of the Union AME Community Church, I mean Church Community Health Fair.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to grant permission to the Warwick Valley Community Center to hold the Day of Acceptance Celebration and Walk on Sunday, June twelfth, twenty twenty-two. The parade will promptly step off at one-thirty PM with lineup beginning at the community center per the letter received on April twelfth, twenty twenty-two. The parade route will be as follows. Hamilton Avenue, Orchard Street, Oakland Avenue, Railroad Avenue, South Street, Main Street, back to Oakland Avenue, back to Orchard Street, and Hamilton Avenue, arriving back at the Warwick Valley Community Center at two fifteen PM. The request includes the use of Railroad Green for about fifteen minutes during the walk. Come, they've completed the park permit, application fee, security deposit, and proof of proper insurance. They've all been received. The Town of Warwick Police Department will assist with vehicle and pedestrian traffic control during the event.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Tom?
Motion to return, return the planning board escrow balance of one hundred and seventy dollars to St. Anthony Community Hospital for amended site plan approval at Fifteen Grand Street. All invoices have been paid as per the email from Village Engineer Dave Getz and Planning Board Attorney Robert Dickover.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. And we clarified. So, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, we have nineteen, yes. Oh, that's right. Okay. So. Carly, do you want to do?
And then we'll start discussion after the motion.
Yep.
Uh, motion to accept the proposal for landscape architectural services from Karen Arnt for the preparation of the landscape master plan for Veterans Memorial Park and authorize the mayor to sign the same.
Okay.
Second.
So, discussion?
Yep. Um, okay. So this, and so this is a proposal to do the master plan, um, for Veterans Memorial Park. It was received pretty recently. So, um, and I thought it would be helpful to, to speak through sort of the selection of Karen. Um, and maybe we could walk through the scope of services briefly and, and just some, some of the things that I noticed that, uh, you know, I would, I would like to amend. And then I, I think, you know, if anybody else has some ideas. So the basic scope of services is to, um, to do the master plan for the fifty-four acre park. As I understand it, Karen Arnt has actually worked with the village before and looking at her rates, they, they looks very reasonable to me. She'll visit the site at various times, photograph, make sure that she's familiar with the park. I think it could make sense for that to coincide with some engagement that we might do there. She'll produce a base map for the park and, um, is going to consider existing proposed park amenities as well as look at the master plan that was prepared in two thousand and seven for ideas that might be feasible. The scope also includes meeting with the park committee and assembling a conceptual master plan um, that would be rendered for presentation to the public. It says, if appropriate, and I, I think that that, you know, you know, we definitely want that. And then there's additional services such as changes to the schematic master plan, site and, um, landscape planning, three-dimensional illustrations, things like that, that could all be optional. And the base services are ninety-five dollars per hour for Karen, who is a registered and licensed landscape architect, and sixty-five dollars per hour for the junior landscape architect and office assessment, uh, assistant. I was thinking that, you know, uh, we should have at least two meetings with Karen, with the, the park committee. One, so that, you know, Karen could speak to her initial findings and the park committee could talk about the feedback and we could process some initial feedback. And then the second meeting would be a presentation of the preliminary results and, um, which would then obviously kind of kick out into some, um, a, 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 a further public engagement. And then we would have a final. I, I think it would be important for the scope to, um, specifically integrate public feedback and, um, and that we would have some sort of not-to-exceed associated with this, rather than it, it just being sort of like a, a potential.
Right. It's an hour, it's an hourly rate. I mean, what?
You can do time and materials with a not-to-exceed. So th- these are kind of some proposed amendments.
So, uh, we have budgeted, uh, five thousand dollars. So.
And, and if we set that limit as five thousand dollars, if the project expanded by virtue of the activities, then they would have, it would have to come back before us to raise that five thousand dollars, to go above that five thousand dollars.
I had a question about the park committee. Who is that made up of?
So it will be, it's not made up yet. It will be stakeholders. Uh, so it, it will include, um, many of the veterans, um, someone, uh, representing Warwick Grove. And then s- someone from Little League football.
Skate park.
Skate park, pump track. So really, I, I, you know, I, I, that's not the full list, but definitely people that are, um, have an active interest in what happens there.
Oh.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna, the way that I was thinking about it, um, was that it would be important to schedule a listening session even before establishing the committee. And, and then, you know, we, we have our own hypotheses about, you know, kind of who, what, what, how, what the composition of the committee should be. It should definitely represent sort of a cross-section of our community who's going to be using, um, you know, represent the diversity of the community and all the different types of people that might be using it. But that the first step of the committee should be to have to process feedback from the public. So that not only are they thinking about things from their own perspective, but they're also thinking about kind of what, you know.
And that.
This is not in her scope because her, like, if, if her, if she's capped at five thousand dollars, then there's gonna, we're gonna have to do a lot to ensure that, you know, there's a really inclusive engagement process, but that she, but part of her scope needs to be that she.
So, so.
Integrates that.
Yeah. I mean, good point, Corey. So to me, I, I see this as a service that takes a look at, once you already have figured out what you want to put in your parks, what's the best layout?
Mm-hmm.
Personally, I think this is, um, putting the cart before the horse. I think, I think that's too early. I think the protected green space owned by the village is one of our most precious resources. And I, I, I like when the community has great ideas that they want to use, but it does become a slippery slope. So when you put together a park plan, I think we have to give a lot of thought and care into how it's going to best serve everyone in the village.
Right.
Right? So I, I hear all these good ideas and, and that's great, right? But to me, this just seems like something that's going to optimize the layout and look at, you know, the, the land over here. Can you remove minimal trees to put this pump track or whatever it is in? And that sounds necessary. I just think that what, it seems like you're alluding to Carly is that public engagement is real, and, and mayor, what you mentioned in terms of committee, or I think Corey did. That's what's going to help, I think, gather that feedback. Um, because I, I don't want to make a decision, right? To put something in that Karen's going to go run with, right? If it's not in the best interest.
No, and I, and I think that's exactly what Carly's talking about. And that, um, I mean, this is, this is to put her in a position where we are going to actually do a lot of legwork and a lot of listening. And, um, to, in the same way, we've been working on the mass, uh, comprehensive master plan, you know, we did a lot of work, w- which was outreach. And so that's what, in, in essence, I think we have to do, uh, um, and even, you know, before we make a committee, but once we make a committee, that will be part of their charge. And, um, and then I think that's the point when we sit down with Karen and kind of give her some of the findings that we've, we've, we've discovered. And then, you know, move forward.
I, I didn't get a sense of a timeline on this. And is, is there flexibility for us to go back after we have some additional input to massage the plan?
Oh, I think so. Yeah.
Yeah, that's kind of what our.
I mean, how far can we stretch that?
That's like fifty hours, right? Well, and that, that's actually part of what I was talking about here. I do think it's really important to have a professional on hand while you're doing public engagement so that you don't start inadvertently making promises that can't be kept from a technical perspective. And also they need to internalize the feedback that people that would be using the facility are providing when they develop their ideas, right? And, and so it's, I think, I, I do agree with the mayor on having her on board now. And also that public engagement process needs to happen sort of in lockstep with the development of, you know, her conceptual design.
And, and part of the thing too is that, um, you know, there's a, there, there is a group chomping at the bit to really, uh, you know, they came to us with a proposal for a pump track. And, um, and, and basically I, I reached out to them and said, sorry, we're, we're waiting because we really want to look at it more holistically and see where it really does fit in. Simultaneously, I don't feel like I, I want them to wait a year or longer. You know, I feel like we should be able to listen and, and at least start that discussion and maybe come up with a, a tentative plan for that if that's going to be a possibility. If that's the direction that the, the board and the committee wants to make.
And back to the park committee, how long do you foresee, uh, it taking to assemble members from each of these groups like veterans in Warwick Grove and the pump track?
I, I don't think that'll be very difficult, uh, at all. I mean, I think that's just a matter of reaching out and, and, uh, and I think I, I think most people would be very interested in participating.
And that's partly our responsibility as the primary and secondary, you know, parks and rec liaisons.
So that's why, how they're going to be selected is through us or?
And I think that's, I think that's an open question. Like, this is part of what I was hoping to do with the, um, the listening sessions. So I was going to talk about this during my update, but what, what I would like to propose is, um, doing a listening session at the park and talking about sort of the history of the park, getting feedback from folks and talking about kind of who uses the park, what they love about the ho, the park, you know, what they don't, you know, um, what sort of the, their wishes are long, long-term for the park. And then, you know, we need to map stakeholders and we need to make sure that we're kind of keeping in mind who uses it now, who could use it, who's near it, who lives near it. You know, when I design an engagement process, I always ask the question, you know, who could affect or be affected by the process and outcomes? And I do think that's something that we have to do. Um, but we should also, we also should talk about kind of how that, like, we, we can design the kind of representation that is appropriate and then get feedback on that. But, you know, how we make the selections, I think, is something we should discuss. Like, is that something that we do as a board? Is that something that we do as the liaisons? You know, do people submit and ask to be a part of it?
Uh, I imagine they would. I mean, I would go to Little League and say, is there a member, uh, of your committee that would, uh, has the time and would like to participate in this? And this is probably what the demands are going to be, you know, so, um, same with the veterans, same with Warwick Grove, you know. I think, uh, you know, to go to the Lions, you know, there would be definitely, um, I think the desire to volunteer, and we'll figure that out. But I think to do a listening, um, meeting or, you know, get together, uh, at the park in the, under the pavilion, do a walkabout, you know, and just get feedback from residents that might not be part of the committee, but then you, we may find committee members through that process. So I think that, that really works. So that's outside of the scope of.
That's outside of her scope, yeah.
So if we were to approve this, right, with adding a not-to-exceed number, which I assume we would re, rephrase the motion, I guess.
Yeah.
As amended.
Yeah.
Does she then just go off with the hourly rate and start, I mean, can, can we put in some sort of touch point, right? X number of hours up until the?
Oh, I'm sorry you interrupted.
No, please go.
What you have before you is a proposal from a landscape architect to perform services, some of which are delineated, some of which are, you know, add-ons, do whatever you want, for basically ninety-five dollars an hour. If you want a different agreement to approve, I think the thing to do is to go back to Karen Arnt and say, look, we like your agreement, but we need these other terms put in. Send her an email or whatever. Have her provide a written agreement for you to approve. If you start approving things with term, you're, it's.
She may not agree to it.
Yeah. And then the confusion is, you need a written agreement in front of your, for her, that she'll sign off on and you can sign off on. So you have a motion and a second. I think probably the thing to do would be have somebody make a motion to table it until you can further discuss it with Karen.
Yeah.
And in the meantime, put together bullet points of what you'd like to see in here and send that to her and she'll resubmit. And then you can approve it at your next meeting if, if you.
Okay. No, that's fine. I think that would be appropriate. So.
And so to just recap, some of the things that we talked about adding in is the requirement that public feedback is integrated into the process that we get some number of meetings with the committee, you know, assumed because I, um, if it's a five thousand dollar cap, then she's going to have to kind of think about how to mush all this in and let us know how many drafts. And then, you know, one of the other things that I was thinking is that the, the, um, the draft concept that is presented to the public, it might be good to have that posted at the site and downtown and top of being at the website. So.
Right, right.
So that would be another.
If visuals help facilitate dialogue.
Yeah. And she's already doing the visuals. And so we could probably print that up, you know, maybe, um, as a, I don't know.
Not with your printer.
Not with my printer. Yeah.
That's a good idea. Thank you.
Okay. So could we have a motion to table this motion?
Yes, I'll, I'll make the motion to table until we have further discussion with, with Karen.
Okay.
And then, and so if we, so then the next time we talk about that, that would be. And then, and so, if we, so then the next time we talk about that, that would be two weeks from now, but we could potentially move forward with planning the, in the first listening session, because the earliest that we could possibly do that, because of Earthfest and everything else, would be like the first weekend in May.
Right. Does that make sense? And then it moves the process along, so?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I'll second Tom's motion to table.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. And I'll reach out to Karen and give her a sense of what's going on.
Can I do my additional motion now?
You can do your additional motion now, thank you.
Second amendment, second motion to table, which was Tom, and then Barry seconded it, and then everyone voted in favor of the motion to table, the first one just dies because of table.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to advertise for the position of Village of Warwick engineer intern at a pay rate of $16 per hour at 32.5 hours per week for 12 weeks.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so-
What do you wanna do for the other intern?
We'll wait, we'll, we can wait till next. Um, and then, we have reports tonight, Barry, do you have something?
Yes, a couple of things. First off, you may have seen one of these hanging from your door, this arrived at my property today. Um, it's from a company in Newburgh called Hudson Valley Environmental Solutions, and they are giving you a little tube to put water in, and, uh, you can send it to them, and they will test it and tell you what's wrong with your water. Their whole purpose in this is to have a salesman contact you and basically sell you, um, water treatment systems, um-
We got one really-
The, uh-
I didn't mean to pick it up.
So, um, again, this is not authorized by the village, other than they did receive a peddler's permit, so they're legit in being able to, to leave these, um, and, uh, you know, we, we would like to think that, uh, you know, everybody's taste is different. I mean, I drink the water from the village untreated, there are other people I know that, uh, you know, use bottled water, so, um, it, it, it becomes a matter of personal preference. Um, our water is, uh, tested thoroughly, regularly, and passes all those tests. We issue an annual water report, which will be coming out probably the end of May, that, uh, and there's, there's one from, uh, 20 that was issued last year from, for 2020, um, and, uh, you can get that online if you'd like to read about our water system.
Great.
And then, the second thing is, um-
Can I just say one thing about that?
Sure.
'Cause the village will also come out and test your water, uh, on-site, if you want them to, right? Like, does that-
We don't know, we don't usually do that.
Oh, 'cause I-
We've got particular places where, where we do test. Certainly, if you, you know, if, if there are, you know, possible leaks or things like that, you know, we, we try and accommodate our customers, but, um, I, you know, we don't, I, I don't know that we've got a, a policy whereby if anybody asks to have their water tested, that we would do it.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, and then, uh, the Orange County Department of Public Works has planned operations related to the construction of the bridge on Bank Street that will utilize the municipal parking area, beginning on Monday, April 25th at 2:00 PM, and be completed on Tuesday, April 26th at 3:00 PM. Uh, the purpose for this is to bring in a large crane and lift the pieces of the new Bank Street Bridge and put them in place. Uh, vehicles may still park in the spaces along the Wauwaianda Creek, in the vicinity of the Carriage Path Bridge, and the municipal lot across South Street. Uh, no pedestrian or vehicular traffic will be permitted in the delineated area during construction operations. Vehicles remaining in the area are subject to be towed on the morning of April 26th, starting at 6:00 AM. Changes to the above-listed restrictions and times will be announced on the Village of Warwick website and on Facebook. Uh, we do recognize that this project, while essential, will be a disruption for many residents and businesses. We appreciate your cooperation in this matter, so that the Orange County Department of Public Works can complete their project within the anticipated period. So, um, I, things are closed right now, even the pedestrian, uh, movement, uh, across the bridge that isn't there-
Right.
-that has been removed, um, so, uh, just, uh, another notice that, uh, this activity's going to occur, and it's going to expand beyond the, the boundaries that are established currently.
Right. I mean, the, the bridge is, uh, prefabricated, so it has to be put in place by an enormous crane-
Yeah.
So, they need, they need a pretty clear-
Yeah, I think, I think it's probably three pieces, the, the deck and then the two side pieces.
And they've moved all the, um, electric wires and lines, so that they can do it.
Right, and they're bringing in an extra-large crane, so that they don't have to take down, uh, lines, because that would increase the amount of time it would take to, uh, re-energize those lines, if they had to string them again.
Right.
Will there be access to the attorney's office and PEX, which are right in that area?
PEX will, in all likelihood, be closed, um, during the lift, um, so, uh, they don't open until 10:00 in the morning, this is gonna start very early, the morning of the 26th, barring any unforeseen weather-related circumstances, and, uh, so, li, and will likely be closed till 2:00, until the final placement's done.
And then the attorney's office, is it?
Um, I don't believe that the lift would endanger the attorney's office, so I believe there's access.
I, I think he's scheduled off-site work for that day-
Yeah.
-from what I hear, so.
Which makes sense.
Yeah, good. Anything else, Barry?
No.
Okay.
I believe that's it.
That's good. Carly?
Um, so, there's a lot going on over the next couple of weeks, uh, there's a Little League Parade this weekend, it steps off on, uh, 10:00 AM on Saturday. There's also a comprehensive planning meeting next Monday evening, um, that I think folks can tune into, and, um, also, you mentioned Arbor Day Celebration next Friday, Earthfest, um, ne, that next Saturday, and also, it's been three years since the build week at the playground at Stanley-Deney.
Wow, wow.
Yes.
Yep, so, and, yeah, there was a disruption in use there, but now, you know, because of the COVID, but now-
Right. No, it, this week, with, not this week, last week, with school being off, that playground, s, there were a lot of happy, noisy kids, and it was great to hear.
Yeah.
And, um, I thought, you know, so, I had the honor of being sworn in just two weeks ago, so I've been becoming more oriented with my role, and, um, there's a couple of things that I've been working on that I just thought would be helpful to share. So, um, I'm the primary liaison for the Office of the Treasurer, Parks and Recreation, Youth, Economic Development and Tourism, and Public Health, so there's a number of codes, policies, and procedures that directly affect that work. Uh, it's my responsibility to know them, so I've been becoming more deeply oriented with those, and there were a few that were identified, um, even became, before I came on board for review, so this week I'll be working with our Treasurer, Sadie, on the cash management policy, and, um, Cory Bachman, Bachman and I will be working on the film code, and, um, Cory's spearheading a number of those reviews, he may mention this, um, and so he and I have agreed to establish an update schedule to, to look at, you know, some of the highest priority ones in that timely, uh, fashion. I mentioned sort of the listening session for Parks and Rec a little bit earlier, but, um, I'd like to schedule some more of those, so people can, I guess, be looking out for those for, um, uh, youth and economic development, um, just to make sure that sort of as I begin my tenure, I understand what people are looking for from me and, and from the village in those areas, um, so-
That's great.
I'll stop there.
Okay, very good.
It's late.
Thank you. Cory?
Uh, I had two events from the Warwick Historical Society to read. Uh, this Wednesday at 7:00 PM at the Buckby Center is the second installment of the Hands-on History Workshop. It's a partnership with the Village of Warwick. Um, this topic is homesteading and permaculture. Uh, also, we have cemetery cleanups from April through October. Um, the first one starts this Saturday at 9:00 AM, everyone's welcome, and, uh, there's more information on the Facebook page and our Warwick Historical Society website, um, so if you're interested in joining, it's a lot of fun, uh, bring your rake, your shovel, your weed whacker, and have fun.
Yeah, sounds good. Tom? No report? No report, okay.
Can I just ask a question of, Cory? You are on the senior citizens committee?
The liaison, yes.
Liaison, what does that involve?
We're just kicking that off now, meeting with different groups around the community to hear their concerns and their, and get their feedback.
Okay.
Well, I look forward to hearing more and talking to you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you, uh, do you participate in any of the senior groups that we have?
I haven't yet.
Yeah.
I'm planning on attending one, well, it's a gardening club-
Oh, okay.
-tomorrow, but, uh, I haven't been involved yet.
Okay.
I look forward to getting involved.
Okay. Well, a, any questions you have, you know where we are, so please, you know.
We used to do Meals on Wheels in Southwood Grove when we-
Yeah, we still do it.
We have, we have a Meals on Wheels program.
In Warwick?
Yes.
In Warwick?
Yes, yes.
In my inquiry, they said you have a, a van that goes around, so they don't need, uh, servers for the Meals on Wheels.
That's-
Oh, I could, that's-
Well, we're not connected with the county program, uh, directly, in other words, we don't get our meals out of Goshen from the-
Oh, okay.
We get them here at the hospital-
Okay.
And it's a little different, you, you have the frozen meal-
Uh-huh.
And the, like, the sandwich that goes out every, well, here, um, what they deliver is a hot meal to, to eat at noon time, and then a second meal for the evening.
So, individuals deliver that to them?
Yes, yes.
So, you need volunteers?
Uh, I would believe so, yes.
That would cut down the distance.
Yes, no, I'm sure they could-
So, who would, who would be the, uh, contact person for that?
Um, I, I'm trying to remember who's in charge of volunteers, um, I-
If you give me your-
Yeah.
-contact information, we'll find out, and I'll call you.
Okay.
Okay, and that would be great.
I'm sure it probably be too good for the hospital.
Well, it's a separate organization, they work out of the hospital, and they, uh, get their meals from the hospital kitchen.
Okay, so, yeah, I'll do that.
There's another program that's, uh, a, a town program called the Friendly Visitors Program, which, um, is outreach to, uh, seniors, uh, seniors who, you know, need a helping hand, friendly visitor, to appear at their doorstep every so often. Uh, Cory, you participated?
I did. I was a grocery shopper.
Oh, okay, yeah. We had neighbors to neighbors in Warwick Grove, I guess that's similar.
Similar, yeah. Very good. Any other questions for the board? Well, you have our undivided attention.
Um, just curious, who takes care, who would take care of the paving, the road paving on Ball?
On Ball Road?
Yes.
It depends what part of Ball Road-
No, all of Ball Road's town.
Yeah, it's all town, okay.
Oh, it is town.
Yes, all of Ball Road is the town, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, even the section between Ridgefield and-
Is it really? No, I didn't know that.
The planning board and zoning board meetings.
I have, I have-
They're-
... scheduled for.
Very good.
Okay.
So, uh, we do have to go into executive session.
I have one more comment-
Oh, yes.
-before we go. So, I, I forgot to mention it during my update, but the Hello Warwick Valley is an initiative that is in coordination with the three villages, the town, and the four chambers of commerce, and helowarwickvalley.com is a place at all these events, we, we post them, and it's got also sort of experience opportunities there, and so they've just updated to include all the playgrounds, the bark parks, and all of our other parks on there, and so I invite people to look and see if anything's missing, um, and also, you know, we, we're always looking for help, um, in adding events, so, just thought I'd mention that.
That's good. Um, so, we, um, have to go into executive session, um, for the medical, financial credit, or employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation, as well as to seek confidential advice of counsel.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll not, when we come back from executive session, we will not make, we will not be doing any business, we will close the meeting at that point, so.
So, I'll say goodnight.
Goodnight to you. Thank you.
But, but, but leave your name and-
Yes, yes.